Being that it's 7:00 PM, I convened the June 16th, 2021 regular meeting to order at 7:00 PM. The library district recognizes Governor Pritzker's Executive Order Number 2021-11, which extends Executive Order Number 2020-07 as amended by Executive Order Number 2020-33 and Executive Order Number 2020-44, January 8th, 2021 disaster proclamation, and the Government Emergency Administration Act Number 100-06-40, which suspends certain requirements of the Open Meetings Act, allowing library trustees to participate remotely. All motions will require a rule call. Agenda item number nine, I'm sorry, Chris, please go.
Mark Rattelli?
Here.
Karen Larson?
Here.
Jimmy Norton?
Here.
Liz Sullivan?
Here.
Emily Swosted?
Here.
Agenda item number two is opportunity for visitors to speak. Public comment is for the general public to address the board. Each person will have up to five minutes to provide public comment. Would you like to speak?
And there's nobody online.
All right, we'll move to item number three. Acknowledges that trustees Norton and Larson reviewed the May billings in June, and then trustee Swosted and Sullivan will review the June billings in July. Agenda item number four is the consent agenda. Is there a trustee who wishes to pull something from the consent agenda? Anyone online? If not, may I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Karen seconds. The discussion? Rule call.
Liz Sullivan?
Aye.
Karen Larson?
Aye.
Jimmy Norton?
Aye.
Emma Swosted?
Aye.
Mark Rattelli?
Aye.
Item number five is unfinished business. Letter A, capital improvement project. First, that is the LLD open house report. We have Eric from Sheenagel Heart Tree here to present the report.
I think I need to make Eric a presenter. Oh, let me get him.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the first time I've been a presenter, so bear with me as I figure out how to get my screen up.
Let me be a presenter. You should get a notification.
The screen got, oh, here it is. All right. I don't know if you can see that yet.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I was expecting it to change up top, all right. Well, first of all, we'd just like to say it was a, we thought it was a very good meeting. There's nothing scientific about the poll and everything there, but there was a lot of good positive energy in the room. And we thought it was very supportive and reassuring that we're all thinking about this project the right way. We did do some of these inspiration images that we asked people to put, tape dots on to kind of signify their interest in particular elements, to take the temperature of the room that was there, the population that was there. And that's what these boards on my screen are showing you. You know, the youth space, I think there was pretty broad spread interest in everything shown there except for tutoring. But that comes up later. And tutoring in another area is actually very strongly supported. So we would be looking to the library kind of for their input on how much tutoring is really needed for the children's area. It could be just a selection of people who were out there that day that had an impact on that. And if there's any comments anyone else wants to make as I go along, that please feel free to jump in. The adult space, again, there was pretty broad interest in a lot of the different services. The collaboration area was noticeably smaller. And I think there's, you know, I think it varies from community to community. And sometimes that depends on what other facilities are available in your community. So I think that one kind of stands out as the thing that really didn't draw as much attention. The teen space, I think surprisingly, got a lot of votes because there weren't teens at the room. So I think this is one of the spaces we really have to work with the library on to find out what the teen crowd is actually interested in. They're kind of underrepresented at the nighttime meeting. And it's something we could do a special meeting with just the teens if we wanted to, to kind of gather direct input. But the interest was pretty spread across. I think technology is clearly at the top, teen collection. But the creative space and collaboration, I'm not sure if those are reflective of the teens' interests or not. We weren't really planning on a big collaboration space necessarily.
Eric, could I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Do you mind explaining the whole process and how you got to these numbers?
Oh, sure. This was, you know, we put these boards together kind of to give some ideas of what could be put in the rooms, what types of features could be put in all the rooms. And every attendee who was interested in voting got a page of taped dots that they could put on the images they were interested in. And that was pretty much unlimited. They could put 50 dots on if they wanted, they could put three or four. Pretty much everyone in the room took some taped dots and did apply them to these boards. And in addition to that, Tatiana and Mark and Don and myself were available in the room afterwards to talk to people who went around and looked at these boards while they were looking at them. So we got kind of some verbal feedback too, which we'll go over at the end of this conversation. So what we're looking at on these boards right here just represents the actual count of the taped dots that were on each image.
And part of the reason why it's important to look at this is it might guide what goes into these spaces. For instance, you can see technology, at least in this instance, on the teen space page, there was a heavy weighting towards people in that particular open house playing stickers in the technology page. So that makes us look and ask a question of staff to say, okay, what types of technologies are used there? Maybe put a little bit more emphasis on researching that with the library as that space is being developed. So, you know, think of it, all these are inspiration boards to make sure the team is asking the right questions of the library, and we can reflect on that as the design is progressing.
And we have a notification. We had about 25 to 30 people attend the open house in all at different times. Some stayed for the full amount of time, some came in, watched the presentation, and then stayed for maybe a few minutes and then left. So it was kind of an in and out with people, about 25 to 30 people.
Yeah, and it was a relatively short presentation, but it showed them the concept that was approved and where we were at at that point in time. And we were really asking for their input on more of these, where their interest was on the program of the spaces. And bearing in mind, this isn't really scientific, and we do have to, when we look at these numbers, we talk to the staff then about, does this make sense with how the library is actually used? And what are you seeing on a daily basis? To kind of make sure the numbers are reflecting kind of an accurate usage of the library. The study spaces, again, this was pretty broad support across. I think the one thing that jumped out to us is pretty typical in our experience is large study rooms. You kind of need to have one, but there's typically not a demand for a bunch of them. Most of the study room activities take place with two to four or a larger group of people. And that kind of six to eight people room sometimes gets underutilized, or you'll have one or two people in there quite a bit at a time. So it's not, it's a room you need, but you don't need two or three of them. And that's pretty typical that we find. The other thing that's striking here is, again, we asked tutoring earlier, and we asked about tutoring space in a different way on this board, and it actually got quite a few votes on this board. And I believe the library has actually got a fair amount of tutoring activities that go on in the building too. So I think that's an area we need to kind of drill down a little bit with the library on and think best of how to satisfy that need. It may not be dedicated rooms, it may be kind of these spaces within the library where there's kind of a semi-quiet seating area where they can do those kind of activities.
And I agree with that determination because we have, maybe it's not tutoring per se, and maybe the word collaboration space may have been, you know, thought of in a different way. But I think tutoring space and working with another person, whether it's you're actually tutoring somebody or just working on a project together, I think that's what this is reflecting, that we need some of that kind of space in our building.
Yeah, it could vary from community to community depending on how the school situation is, if they have a strong program after school or not. But you're near a school, a middle, and so it is something that comes up. The outdoor space, there was a lot of enthusiasm for across the board. Kind of noticeably, it was kind of more towards events and variety of seating areas and a little less towards quiet reading or book club discussion, which in some ways makes a certain amount of sense. Book club is a little more difficult to do. But there was strong support about it, and it actually came up a great deal in the discussions afterwards. I think some people voiced they were surprised to see the library was considering outdoor space. Other people were very enthusiastic about it, and frankly, it's a newer trend in libraries. And you guys are kind of at the forefront in that. But this is a list of things that Don and I kind of experienced when we were talking to people after the presentation, while they were putting the dots on. There was a great deal of enthusiasm across the board, but these areas kind of stood out. There was strong support for having a teen space. There was people, I can't say how many people, you know, almost everyone I talked to liked the idea of the north and south entrances off the, with parking nearby. And it's just a reaction to that slope site. It's hard to find one entrance that meets enough requirements. So I think it's kind of confirming the decision that the board made to kind of go with that approach. There was also, the parents there were really happy to hear the children's area was on the first floor and more accessible, had a little bit more room to move into develop program area. The drive-up windows seemed to surprise a few people, but those who asked about it were very enthusiastic that they could use it. You know, they, again, having accessible entrances at multiple areas and things, the ease of access was pointed out. And then, like I said earlier, the outdoor program space had a great deal of positive response. It seems to be something your community particularly enjoys. And I will say, being, moving here from Michigan into this flatland area, you guys have a unique terrain for this area, and it seems to be greatly appreciated by the residents. Me too, it feels like home a little bit when I'm out there, there's hills and trees and so forth. The family restroom was brought up by several people, they were very supportive of that. And then the thing we weren't expecting, but there was a lot of reinforcement of, is people wanted to make sure you maintained a vibrant collection of materials, that they really enjoy the collection the library has, and they're hoping not to see it reduced or diminished in any way. So overall, I think we found that it really did support the key targeted areas that the library had selected and was interested in reinforcing and improving in these schemes. And so from that point of view, it was a very positive presentation. I'll let Tatiana and Mark talk a little bit. They were being asked the questions about financing and so forth.
Yeah, so Mark and I stationed the money board where we had all of the graphs and charts. And I did have a few patrons ask me a question about the levy and the funding. And every patron I spoke to, I would say most every patron I spoke to there were very comfortable with the library aligning the levy with inflation moving forward in regards to the renovation. And they understood that after reducing the levy for a number of years, that increasing with CPI or inflation makes total sense and allows us to operate normally. And my biggest takeaway from the conversations, and this was at the money board, was that patrons were most concerned about having a robust collection of materials. And Eric is very correct. Even there, they want to make sure we had the funding for materials, these materials being physical and digital. And then the other main topic of conversation at the money board was about square footage for youth services and adult services. So discussing the fact that youth services would be increasing its footprint, and that adult services would be dividing its square footage among the first floor and the second floor, and just letting them know that it would be equally distributed between departments. That gave everybody a bit of peace. And we also talked about maximizing the floor space with the shelving. So not decreasing the collection size, but adjusting the shelving to better meet the needs of the renovation. And then I received a lot of positive comments too about the north and south side entries. People were really interested in being able to enter directly into the youth services space, as were some patrons very interested in entering directly into the computer area in adult services. So it was a great open house. I'll turn it over to Mark, but then I want President Rattelli and trustee Sullivan to, they were there too, representing the board, and they can also provide comments about Eric.
Yeah, and I don't have too much to add. I think Eric and Tatiana did a really good job summarizing everything. I'm sure, as I said, it'll be summarized a little bit more efficiently from the board members' point of view here in a moment. But one thing, standing by the information board or the money board, I did get a couple of questions about, you know, how is the schedule going to work with the library? Will we have access to the library and things like that? So when I did point out that the project is expected to be phased, where there'd be some library services open to the public throughout the whole renovation, that really resolved any fears that, you know, someone might not have access to the library. So that was something that I noted at least three times, I think, came up and was alleviated fairly quickly. Other than that, there were some questions, I think, on just how, you know, projects can, what they cost and what the breakdowns were. But you walk through and you find out the historical data, and it seems to make sense at that point. But I think it all summarized it well, so I'll turn it over. President Rattelli?
Trustee Sullivan, would you like to add your comments?
You just want to go last. My comments were very similar to what's already been said. I will say that I expected, like, people to have more questions. I think they were just interested and wanted to be informed. So I think the amount of material was just perfect. I think the presentation that the architects gave was the right amount of information. And people picked out the things that they were worried about. You know, like Tatiana said, "I hope you're still going to have books," somebody said to me. So, you know, you walk them back and you explain, yes, 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 yes. "I hope you're going to have technology." Well, yes, 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 and this is how and this is where. So everybody had a specific interest, and as soon as you explain to them, well, you're going to be satisfied, plus you're going to get all this other stuff. They were very happy. They can't wait, as a matter of fact. So that's what my experience was.
Thank you. Well, I, just to add, I agree with everything that's been said. I did get a question about whether the library would remain open during renovation, and that is a yes, that's what I informed them of.
Yep.
And then also, they want to know if the number of PCs for public use would be less, same, or more.
Okay, we anticipate kind of an even distribution, so not a lot of reduction, maybe one or two less, a small amount less, because we'll be redistributing them throughout the building. But right now, we're not seeing high demand. Before COVID, we were adequately outfitted and maybe a little bit more than necessary. So we might see some reduction there, but not a huge amount.
And that's consistent with what we're seeing in libraries in general. It's the proliferation of personal devices that you can utilize and things. It's kind of diminishing the demand for fixed stations.
Right.
But I think trustee Sullivan, I'd like to reinforce her point, though, that I think people come with a certain amount of tension of, what's going to change at the library? Am I going to lose the things I like? And in the absence of knowledge and information, they tend to assume the worst. I think most people felt very relieved to find out that not only was the library going to have what it had before, but there were going to be improvements to it that they were interested in. And for a public meeting, that was as positive as public meetings go for energy and so forth. That was very good meeting.
I think the library did a really good job in getting the word out that there was open house, so it was well-attended for these types of meetings. And I think it is a benefit to doing these and that it can become part of the discussion as design progresses. So you not only get the staff input, the board input, but now the community input all melding together. So good timing and kudos to the team for pulling it together.
Agreed, and I think, I know I saw some new faces. So that, I think, really shows that we really threw, cast a wide net out there to inform the residents of this project.
I have a question. Do we have any idea when the second open house might be? I think, are we talking about a total of three possibly?
Yes. The next one, we're anticipating to be in July.
July.
Yes, and I would think it would be after the presentation to you of new material. We'd like, and Eric correctly from wrong, but I believe we want to sit down with you at the next board meeting, give you the schematic design presentation with the updated floor plans that are progressed and some more design iterations. And then take that information after your feedback is given and kind of go through this, almost the same process. It might be a little bit different because we don't, might not be as many inspiration boards, for instance, putting stickers on it might be more of an update. But the same process in July after the working.
Yeah, actually, hang on to those inspiration boards, because we might pull those out again for it to just illustrate kind of what the previous meeting was about.
I've actually posted it in our meeting here right now, just in case.
But basically, we want, you know, we want to get your design input, but then we'll reach out to the community and see what their feelings are about it too.
Is that it, Eric, or is there more to add? Do you have any questions?
That's it. We're progressing otherwise. Tomorrow, we are meeting with the city to talk about zoning and building codes. We don't anticipate any issues, but we'll certainly let you know if there are any. But I think it's a pretty straightforward project in that respect. If we were adding on a bunch of square footage, it would be probably different. But this is pretty straightforward because it's primarily interior work.
That's a great transition progress update, if that makes sense to you now.
Just any other trustee who's got a question to pop the open?
I have a question, and this is probably the question that we don't want to ask because we don't want the answer. Is the price of lumber going to impact the project, and if so, by how much?
The price of lumber will have, it's going to impact every project, but it's factored into the cost estimates. When we do the cost estimate, we have an escalation factor on the end of it, and that's one of the markups that you may have remembered from the buildup. So that is factored in there to a point. I will say, you know, for instance, today, if she just read that the lumber prices are coming, for the first time, they actually broke, historically, they've been around $400 to $500 per the unit of material that they're sold. They went up to over $1,400, and they're down below $1,000 now.
They are dropping very fast.
Yes.
The speculators who bought up lumber to raise the price are losing money now, so they are selling their lumber fast. And developers that we work with all quit doing housing projects when the lumber prices went so high. We've had, we have them that want to start five projects this week. So they feel the numbers are going to be good in a couple of months, back to where they're supposed to be.
We will continue to watch the market. And we hear different things from different subs, whether it be door hardware, and I know Eric heard that, I heard it from two different sources. There's different things like that we always will watch out for, but there is a safety factor in the estimates for that.
Great, thank you.
But Mark, you guys are estimating for the period of when the project is going to get built.
Correct.
So that, so it is a projection. But it's, it kind of, this blip is not the issue. It's kind of anticipating blips down the road is what we'll have to watch.
Mark, would you like to segue into the?
Yeah, definitely. The open house was part of the progress update. So the next bit, as Eric did mention, I believe, Sheenagel Heart Tree did have design meetings with the staff. There were individual meetings for the different departments as well as administration. Those were really beneficial. I know I've heard from Amy and Eric that, you know, there was a lot of good feedback there, and I believe Director Weinstein, same thing on your end. So that was, we had a good month for that. The design team has also been on-site multiple times reviewing and documenting existing conditions. You know, for instance, finding the big folder on the north, was it the northwest corner of the site? Things like that.
Yeah.
And they're continuing to come out. I know they were out the past two days. We'll be out again next Monday for meetings, so it's a lot of work going on right now.
And by design team, Mark is referring to all of our consultants too, the mechanical plumbing engineers, the civil engineers, the landscape architects, those people.
And in addition to them, there are library consultants that will be, that are coming out. The environmental survey is being done. It's basically a check to make sure that we're not worried about asbestos or lead or any of those other types of issues. If we are, we want to notice now, not later on. Same thing with land surveying. Eric's Engineering is coming out, and they're doing the whole land surveying as well as private utility location. So they're trying to find where everything is underground. And then the other thing, besides just design, we're also moving forward with putting together the pieces for the bond and disclosure council processes. Those are the entities that will look over the library's best interest when the bonds are eventually issued. So there will be board meeting discussions on that in the future. Right now, we're starting to do the lab work on that. And then obviously, as you all have heard, we did the community engagement meeting. In terms of schedule, we are still on schedule, which is great. We are at the June schematic design status update meeting. The next meeting is going to be in July. We anticipate coming to the board with a schematic design report, which would be design updates, an updated cost estimate based on the progress to date, as well as a check against the overall project schedule. We'll also probably start talking about project delivery methods, in other words, what type of builder and when that process needs to fall in line at the next board meeting. And I did put a little screenshot of the schedule zoomed in for upcoming activities. As you can see, we also are covering permitting, as Eric said, with our meeting with the village. And doing that now, when you have a gap in between when we need to go in for building permit, just to make sure we have enough time, it floats is what we call it, to do anything that might need to be done, have submitting for building permit. So upcoming activities, we have the village staff review tomorrow. And then we have Sheenagel Heart Tree finalizing the schematic design. And then we have, the next thing for you to be aware of is the presentation to you at the July working.
I see that Don just joined us.
I was going to ask if you want to be, I don't know if you're still looking at my screen. Do I need to do something to stop sharing my screen?
Yeah. Thank you.
Make another attendee the presenter?
As they're doing now, I'll just finish up the.
I put it back to Tatiana.
All right, so the last thing was the, and we'll do this every month as we go through, so you're always aware of where money stays, because at the end of the day, the project's going to be paid for, and we've got the under budget or on budget, I should say. So right now, you can see we have no change the anticipated cost of the project. And the committed to date, those are signed contracts essentially, so that's Sheenagel Heart Tree, all of their consultants have fallen into those design categories. Those are the contracts that were approved last month. CCS and other miscellaneous things like the environmental survey, land survey, and things like that. So all good news overall, and we're trending in the right direction. I'll stand by for any questions as they sort through the presenter.
Yeah. I think we still have to. Did I just say okay? Eric, I think we still need to make a quick one. In the meantime, I don't know if Don wants to add anything because he was there and he provided the presentation at the beginning of the meeting. Would you want to just go over what you went over on at that presentation? I mean, not in full, but in summary.
Well, you know, we tried to highlight some of the things that we've discussed in these meetings, things that we thought would be of particular interest to the public. And that included explaining the design strategies and why we've taken the design strategies that we've taken. And I think based on the feedback we had after the meeting, things like relocating the building entry to the center of the building, moving the youth services to the first floor off the lobby, adding a second entry on the south side of the building to take advantage of the parking that's there. We received a number of positive comments with respect to those design strategies, I would say. One of the other things that we tried to highlight was the, were some of the costs, you know, making sure that everybody understood that cost is an important factor in working through the design of this. And so highlighting things like making reuse of existing back-up house spaces, prioritizing the expenditures on the public side of the building, the fact that we are working with the existing building and not expanding it at all, aside from adding a little vestibule on the south side of the building for the new entry. So we tried to emphasize that as well, so that the public had a, you know, an awareness of that. These are things that, you know, we often talk about in these meetings, but I think, you know, when it's just, it was only a 15-minute presentation. And so I think when it's, when the presentation is that short, and those are the things that you focus on, they tend to be the things that people remember, you know, coming out of it. So, you know, I didn't hear many comments from the public about the cost side of things, but I'm hoping that it serves some useful purpose as far as the messaging that the library is trying to get out to the public. Those are the things that come to mind offhand. I was, I thought it was very successful. You know, we've done a number of these things through the years, and I thought this was very successful. And I thought that the format worked out very well, where it was a short presentation followed by a kind of town hall that allowed people to go around and ask questions, look at things. The sticker thing seemed to be somebody, that's one of those things, you know, you're always a little bit worried, do we end up with a bunch of blank boards, you know, at the end of the night? And I think the people who were at the meeting really embraced that as an activity. And so I think that's, you know, that's all, those are all signs of positive engagement with the community, which is really what you're hoping for in these things.
Thank you. Okay. Subset number three, it's communications plan update. And what I have for that is dependent on the schematic plan designs and images as part of the communications overall. And we'd like to provide a special mailing after the board sees the new designs and also include the financial information that was shown on the image board, à la the Villa Park flyer. And we'd also replicate those financial points on a flyer internally as well in the building and also include any new schematic design. So maybe a two-page flyer on both sides, one side being financial, the other side being new imagery, mailing it out special just to inform residents that this is our next stage, dependent on our scheduling of the next open house, maybe advertising that as well to get people interested in coming to with open house. So that's number one. We'll also take higher resolution photos of the image boards. I know that I put together a PDF that's available on the website and I shared with the board members, but there are kind of, there's a collage of them and they're not super clear, so we'll take individual shots of each board and post them on the website. And then thirdly, also planning to do some videos that will show where the renovation changes will occur, as well as what we intend to accomplish with the renovation. So that's kind of adding another layer to our overall communications plan, having flyers, imagery, having some video, and also sending out blue mailings just to keep everybody in the loop. And I don't know if you guys have any more to add about communication?
No, I think we'll work with staff to schedule, find the right timing to schedule the next one. So we do have three that we're targeting right now, and we'll make sure that the formats keep the momentum going with getting the community aware of what your plans are.
Moving on to agenda item number six, the committee reports. I just wanted to add that new committee arrangements will be announced at the July working.
Thank you, Chanig-Hartrey.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving on with finance.
Yeah.
Finance committee report.
No update as of today.
Thank you. Personnel policy.
We met on June 1st, and everything that we discussed at that meeting is actually on the agenda for tonight. One of the things that you noticed was with the director's evaluation, we're going to be working more with that after we get through tonight's as the whole board. So we'll talk about that more later.
Great, thank you. And there's no report from fiscal plan? Moving on to agenda item number 10, staff reports. Director's report.
Okay. So we did have our, what I'm calling the department director summit with the architects, and it was very successful. We had that on June 2nd. And just to reiterate, it was a day full of positive and productive conversation, and the architects really left those meetings, I feel, with a much better understanding of the ins and outs of the day-to-day of each department. And we'll have more meetings as we go, and all the feedback that the architects soaked in will be coming out in the next set of designs I anticipate for the board to look at. Not outrageously different from our overall kind of sketch of what the floor plans look like, but from hearing from the staff and kind of the better ways of functionality of the department, I think, hone the designs to a much better outcome. And staff were very supportive and excited and can't wait to see the next phase. We had our first open house, we talked about that. At the end of my report, I talked about a technology update for the board, and we're all aware of the hacking and ransomware threats that are in the news lately, and I updated the board on some of the library's preventative measures that we take to avoid data breaches. We just recently installed a new firewall and backup that oversee unlimited specific network traffic. All the staff participate in quarterly security awareness training sessions, and we also have quarterly access testing performed on our network. Our server room is secured with lock, and we also have a user lock for anyone who's in there who's outside of staff, like our outsourced team comes in sometimes. We also have advanced threat protection for our email system. We have antivirus on all of our servers and computers, and we also have copies of our server backups secured in different regions. And just all of these measures we take to help remain secure from harmful activity. We did have our summary kickoff event last Saturday, June 5th. It was wonderful. It ran for three and a half hours and brought more than 100 patrons to the library. And this year, we modified our youth services activities by asking participants to register ahead for sessions, and then we had 10-minute gaps in between the sessions just so we could socially distance, and it really worked quite well. Parents were really grateful for the opportunity to come and participate in an outdoor event, but also grateful that the library sectioned off the sessions into groups so that families could participate safely. I'd say, I know that there were some trustees there, but I'd say it was about 50/50 with mask wearing for the participants. Kids under 12 can't get vaccinated, so many parents and kids were masked outside, so were the library staff. We also had an ice cream truck, we had balloons out there, we had craft kits to pick up for the adults and teens, and then we had sign-up stations to register for summary. It's the whole reading program, that's why we do this. And the whole program runs through August 14th. And as of this evening, we have over 743 participants. So it was a great event. I want to thank everyone who came. Everybody respected each other's space, and we're still navigating the virus, the COVID-19, and putting on public events has been, we're in kind of a gray area with that, even though we're in phase five, just because of the kids we serve. So thank you all for, the community for coming out. It was a great event. I also stopped by a Lyle Woods event this past weekend on Sunday. It was their garden gate, and the library donated a gift bag for that annual raffle, and it was just really nice to see the community out for that event as well. I think Lyle is thirsty for some outdoor event. And then just lastly, I want to update the board about library operations, as Illinois has moved into phase five of the restored Illinois plan. We've opened up more public areas in the building. Staff are continuing to wear masks, and youth services department continues to be a kid zone equals mask zone. And again, that's because kids can't be vaccinated yet. I did speak with department directors about our plans for making masks optional for vaccinated staff, and they're comfortable with making masks optional as of the term of the fiscal year, so that would be July 1st. We would continue keeping the youth services department a mask zone equals, a kid zone equals mask zone. It's still, obviously, we are encouraging it. We're not, it's not mandatory, but highly encouraging it because of the kid not being vaccinated. And in other opening up news, we opened up the study rooms near the circulation desks. We're almost done with the room near reference. We still have MIT stuff in there. There are tables and chairs in the atrium again, and there are some of the more comfy chairs and couches are scattered around the building again, and there's some benches, too. So more and more areas are looking like we did pre-COVID. In the youth services department, there is a corner where we used to have a bunch of toys gathered around. We will soon configure that area back into being an open space, and instead of having toys, floor will have stations where kids can engage with some new learning desk area station. So that's coming soon as well. With that as my report, any questions?
Secretary Swistak.
Thank you. Actually, it's vice president now, right? It's okay. I know, it's so new. I just had a question for the director. She talked about the, with phase five, with fully vaccinated patrons having the masks being optional, starting July 1st, right? Comfortable with that. For fully vaccinated staff, are they going to have the option to wear masks, or are you still going to have staff all wear masks?
That's what I was mentioning is for.
Oh, that's what you were saying? So I missed that part of it, that it was for staff. Sorry.
Right now, because we're in phase five, our signage from masks required changed to masks encouraged.
Okay.
Or recommended. That changed as soon as we went into phase five. So we've had patrons in the library without masks already. It's just been a kind of requirement up until this point, and I just wanted to touch base with staff about their comfort level, the temperature of the department. We've been asking staff about their vaccination, if they've gotten vaccinated, the rates of vaccination in each department. And so we think by July 1st, we'll be at that of optional.
Okay.
Who needs to still wear masks, even outside of the youth service department, because that's their comfort.
Right. And that's what I was going to ask, too, you know, with youth services, even if youth services staff is fully vaccinated, they're going to continue to wear masks because it's a kid zone equals mask zone?
On the public floor, but if they're in the staff.
Right. No, on the public floor. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I missed the part where you said staff. I don't know, I don't know where my head was. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Weinstein? Thank you. Assistant Director McCallum's report.
The library parking lot was seal coated and striped over the Memorial Day weekend, and that went smoothly and liked the look of it. Looks nice. The weekend of June 5th, the library had a brownout with lights flickering and the computers were rebooting. One air conditioning compressor automatically turned off to protect the equipment due to reduced electrical power. Monaco Mechanical, the library's HVAC service, was called, and they came out on the weekend, and the technician fixed and reset the compressor. We had the air conditioning working properly in this end of the building again. Sadly, the library would like to acknowledge the passing of Tom Gritzenbach, owner of Monaco Mechanical. We appreciate Tom's personal attention to the library. That's my report.
Any questions for our assistant director? Thank you. Moving on. Agenda item number eight is new business. There are a number of ordinances and a resolution for board adoption, plus the statutory acknowledgement and director salary approval. Before setting the director salary, the board will go into executive session. PA is resolution 21-03. Board members may have a motion to adopt in a second, and then we'll open the floor for discussion.
I move to adopt resolution 21-03.
I will second.
Second?
I will second.
Yeah. Thank you. Any discussion? Vote call, please.
Aye.
Karen Larson.
Aye.
Jenny Norton.
Aye.
Emily Stossack.
Aye.
Parker Jartelli.
Aye.
Item 8B is ordinance 21-01, special reserve fund revisions. The library district's plans for special reserve fund expenditures. We have a motion to adopt in a second, and we'll open the floor for discussion.
What was the resolution number on that?
21-01.
Okay, mine at the top says ordinance number 16-03.
You're looking at a pass? I think that was an example.
That was a, that is a current, that right after it is the draft. This would be on page 59.
So sorry. I move to adopt ordinance 21-03. I'm sorry, 01.
Is there a second?
Treasure and Norton will second.
Thank you. Will you provide an explanation?
I will, I will. This is an updated special reserve ordinance, and for reference in the packet is the current ordinance from 2016. The personnel and policy committee reviewed the updated draft. To summarize why we are updating this, it's because we've approved a careful project. Having an ordinance like this is mandatory if a public library has a special reserve fund, and the point of the ordinance is to inform the public And the point of the ordinance is to inform the public about why the body is saving money via this fund. The ordinance references the ability to use funds for emergencies, and then tells the public that we have this plan for expenditures, and that lays out the projects where the funds may be used. It's really for transparency purposes. This ordinance can be updated at any time and multiple times a year if the board sees a reason to do so. Updating it now is important because we just approved a $7.7 million budget for the project. And because the special reserve fund will eventually be depleted of the project funds, it won't be 100% depleted, so it's important to list the intention of continuing to save special funds. So the phrase campus enhancements is included as a second category here. It could refer to using one of the vacant lots for outdoor programming space or other types of uses. There is a placeholder amount in this line. And once the renovation is nearing completion, the board should then revise this ordinance to meet the needs of any future capital expenditures and use of special reserve funds. The board may choose to revise the term campus enhancements at that time, or replace that term with a new category, and adjust the amounts necessary. By then, you'll have new board members on board, and you can all discuss this and determine what you would like to continue saving special funds for. So do expect to change this ordinance once we are closing in on the project's completion date for renovation.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Weinstein? Jenny?
Thank you, President Bartelli. Thank you, Director Weinstein, for this draft. And I would just like to ask, and sorry if I missed it in your explanation, but the plan for expenditures, the 7.7 line makes sense, but then are we just putting that $2 million campus enhancement line out there as kind of, I mean, I know what we said, you know, it's subject to change, we're going to review this and reassess this anyways, but what, you know, what was the thinking behind the 2 million? Just to have it out there to give yourself room to grow into, or what was the thought process?
So, at the committee meeting, it was mentioned that that number can be any number. It can be 1 million, it can be 2 million, it can be 500,000 or 20,000. I put 2 million in there as a placeholder for a major vacant lot, possible outdoor reading, outdoor programming space, and it was just a guesstimation. And so even tonight, the board can change that number at the draft. We went, we used the Personnel Policy Committee to write up the draft, just so we could efficiently fit in a draft update into a meeting that was already scheduled. But this can go through Personal Policy, this can go through Finance Committee, this can go to the whole board, committee of the whole board. We just thought that it was expedited because we just approved of this $7.7 million. The 2 million, again, we're discussing it as now, if the board's more comfortable with changing the number there, that is up to you. But I thought it was important to at least have a category there for the reservation of expense of monies that will be in special reserve for a project outside of the renovation.
So, is it kind of like a placeholder?
It is.
And we definitely have to revisit this once we get closer to the renovation.
Any other questions? Call please.
Liz Sullivan.
Aye.
Jenny Norton.
Aye.
Emily Spose.
Aye.
Karen Larson.
Aye.
Margaret Bartelli.
Aye.
Item HC is Ordinance 21-02, the ordinance prohibiting non-resident cards. We have a motion to approve in a second. We'll open the floor for discussion.
Treasure Norton, I move to adopt Ordinance 21-02. Do I need to mention its name, or just is that good?
That's good. Sir, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Director Weinstein?
Sure. Every year, we adopt this ordinance, non-resident cards are created when the Lyle Library is the nearest library to a resident who does not have a local library. And then the resident can pay for an LLD card. And we do use the tax bill method, where the property's assessed value is used to calculate that amount. All this information is on the library's website where it reads, "Non-resident homeowners' fees shall be equitable and proportionate to the fee paid by Lyle Library District residents, and shall be determined by multiplying the current tax rate per to each county by the net taxable value of them."
Any questions? Call please.
Jenny Norton.
Aye.
Karen Larson.
Aye.
Liz Sullivan.
Aye.
Emily Spose.
Aye.
Margaret Bartelli.
Aye.
Item 8D, Ordinance 21-03, meeting date ordinance. The motion is second to approve.
I'll move to adopt Ordinance 21-03, meeting date ordinance, annual setting of regular board meetings with the Lyle Library District.
I'll second. Thank you. Think this is self-explanatory? Need a little call, please?
Karen Larson.
Aye.
Hold on, hold on, I have a question, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I thought I heard some rumblings earlier, but I just wanted to make sure that I understood completely why the August is not the third, the third Wednesday of the month, and why it's the second Wednesday of the month?
It's because the previous month, we have to, we have to allow for a 30-day hearing for the VNA. So that's why-
Okay. So all the, all the rest of them are the third Wednesday of the month, but August is the second. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Call.
Karen Larson.
Aye.
Liz Sullivan.
Aye.
Emily Spose.
Aye.
Jenny Norton.
Aye.
Margaret Bartelli.
Aye.
Item 8E, statutory requirement to acknowledge the payment of earned or unused vacation time, as required by Illinois Wage, Payment, and Collection Act 820ILCS 115-5. This payment shall not exceed $7,224.75 to be paid to Winona Patterson. We need a discussion, it's just, no, it's an acknowledgement.
Is that in our packet? Okay. I know, second question about getting pages mixed up.
I'm sorry. It's on the agenda. It's on the agenda.
Okay. So I didn't miss a page?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Trustee Sullivan?
I'm good.
Okay, good. All right. Item 8F, will be on hold until the board returns from executive session. May I have a motion in a second to go into executive session, and will the person who makes the motion, please read the full citation?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session. 5ILCS 120/2C1, the appointment, employment, and compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body, or against legal counsel of the public body to determine its validity.
I'll second.
Call.
Karen Larson.
Aye.
Who was the second?
Liz Sullivan.
Liz Sullivan.
Aye.
Jenny Norton.
Aye.
Emily Spose.
Aye.
Margaret Bartelli.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. We are going to go into executive session, and the board will be signing out. The public watching will see a screenshot, and then we will return to open session after
Agenda item 8F, or approval of director salary for fiscal year 2021-2022. Well, thank you for nothing. For fiscal year 2021-2022. May I have a motion in a second and then we'll open up the floor for discussion.
Treasurer Norton, I move to approve the director's salary of $122,257.40 for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. I also move to approve a one-time bonus for the director in the amount of $1,000.
I will second. Jenny, could you repeat the amount again?
The amount of the salary, the bonus, or both?
We got that. It's okay.
Oh, got them? Okay, good.
Karen seconded. Yes. Do any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Jenny Norton.
Karen Larson.
Aye.
Liz Sullivan.
Aye.
Emily Sostak.
Emily, we can't hear you.
Okay, I had an internet glitch, so I don't know if you've said my name. Did you say my name?
Yes, for this.
Okay.
Marjorie Bartelli.
Aye.
Moving to agenda item number 10, opportunity for trustee comments. We'll start with Secretary Larson.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you to Marjorie Bartelli and trustee Liz Sullivan for attending first open house. How exciting. We drove through the parking lot that night on our way home from doing something and we're kind of like excited to see all the cars, so it was pretty exciting. And thank you, Tatiana, for, you know, all the hard work that you put into it. We were graders, the architects, and to make the first open house so successful. Looking forward to the next one. Actually good.
All right, thank you. Treasurer Norton.
Nothing specific at this time. Thank you.
Hello, never mind. Trustee Sullivan.
I just want to thank everybody for working so hard on everything we've been facing this whole fiscal year, and I can't wait for the renovation to be done. So this is, this is going to go into my impatient season. I want it done tomorrow.
Agreed. Thank you. Vice President Sostak.
Thank you for bearing with me with my internet issues. I apologize. I just wanted to comment on how much I appreciated hearing about the open house. Thank you to President Bartelli and trustee Sullivan for attending. I really, I'm really excited about, about the next two open houses and hearing more about that. I also really appreciate the staff input in the renovation process. I'm glad that they were able to meet with the architects and give some more input as far as what it will look like for them because they're working in it day to day. And so they have a different viewpoint than, than the board members do and some of the, the community members do as well. I also wanted to say that my family, really the family members of mine that attended the Summer Read kickoff event, really appreciated that. We were unable to sign up for one of the slots because it was, it was booked solid at that time, but we were still able to come and enjoy some ice cream and sign up for Summer Read. My youngest got a backpack, colored one of the coloring pages and was really excited about that. So I just wanted to say that I, I really appreciated that and it was a great event as well. So thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to comment on the Summer Read kickoff. Very impressed, well attended, and I also got an ice cream, which is very good. Also comment on the open house, very successful, very encouraging. It was great to see the turnout that we had and looking forward to the next open house. And I also wanted to mention that I think last month's report, Director Weinstein mentioned that we had a 90% vaccination rate. And I noticed this month we are up to 98% of staff is vaccinated. And we're all there and that's quite a jump. Good job. Last item on the agenda is to adjourn. May I have a motion in a second?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 No discussion, no discussion. We're good, right?
We made a roll call.
Liz Sullivan.
Aye.
Karen Larson.
Aye.
Jenny Norton.
Aye.
Emily Sostak.
Aye.
Marjorie Bartelli.
Aye. We are adjourned at 9:10 PM. Thank you all.
Thank you.